Councilmember Price?
Thank you, Council President. Out in the presence of caution, the city attorneys asked me to recuse myself from item thirteen because I am a landlord. Item thirteen.
Item one-three, all right. Oh, you have comments for thirteen? Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, we introduced this motion on January fourteenth with an urgency clause because our city had just gone through one of the worst natural disasters in our history. We saw the writing on the wall. We knew that rent gouging would run rampant. We knew that thousands of people had just lost jobs and were suddenly wondering how they would be able to pay their rent. We knew that we were facing a second wave to our eviction crisis. And since we introduced it that day, this motion has been cut and amended and whittled down. And as this body wrung its hands and worried endlessly about the process, L.A. County and their Board of Supervisors did what we were unable to do. They passed a set of strong protections for tenants who are impacted by an unprecedented event. What does that say about us? That a governing body responsible for eighty-eight cities could pass protections but we couldn't? By failing to pass these protections, we looked away from more than seven thousand union workers who lost wages and jobs because of the fires, from gardeners and nannies whose jobs disappeared overnight. We looked away from a city whose renters were, uh, from a city where, uh, of renters where too many struggle already to make ends meet. We heard every excuse for inaction. We need to follow process. We need to make sure there's no fraud. We need more time. When it comes to wealthy communities and corporate interests, we see how fast this body can move. But when it's about keeping working-class renters in their homes, apparently, we're content to let the clock run out. So yes, I'm grateful the county stepped up where this council failed, but let's be clear, we should be leading the fight for housing justice, not relying on the county. Los Angeles is a city of renters, and I hope that we can do better for our constituents moving forward. I hope we fight harder to keep people in their homes. I hope we do more to catch people when they're in crises, and I hope we fight harder for people who can't afford to hire lobbyists and special interest groups. Thank you.
Um, I just want to thank Councilmember Hernandez for bringing this forward. It is undoubtedly that had an effect on the county, you bringing this forward and pushing as much as you did. And I'm thankful the county did the right thing, but I'm also thankful for your leadership and for having, uh, doing something that created a discussion on a much larger scale. And so I think this is good for the city of, the entire county now of Los Angeles. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. On item number sixteen, while I deeply appreciate the environmental goals driving the push for battery-powered water heaters, electric water heaters, we have to acknowledge the significant financial burden that a mandate would place on our residents. Forcing a citywide switch is simply not feasible. It's not equitable. Los Angeles already faces some of the highest electricity costs in the nation. It will cost three to five thousand dollars for a tankless water heater and almost ten thousand dollars to replace an electrical panel. So, do you mean to tell me that it would cost around fifteen thousand to make the full changeover and folks in my community just can't afford it? I can't put that burden on an eighty-five-year-old woman who lives next door. I can't do that to any of my constituents. I, in my own home, I can't even turn on the microwave and the toaster at the same time. It will require me to change out my panel. This burden will disproportionately fall on people who are already struggling to meet basic needs. I, I completely understand we have to take steps towards preserving the environment, but our constituents should not be forced to choose between compliance and financial stability. I cannot give my eye vote on item number sixteen. Thank you.
There are a bunch of advocates, I believe, who are here to speak today on this item. I just want to say, the air quality crisis in Southern California is, is one of the most serious health challenges we face. AQMD estimates we need to cut hydrogen oxides by over sixty-seven percent to meet air quality standards by the 2037 deadline. This is local air pollution impacts. We know that gas-powered furnaces and water heaters are some of the largest sources of harmful pollution in our region, and transitioning to zero-emission alternatives is a necessary step to protect public health. I want to note importantly that South Coast AQMD's proposal is a flexible approach that focuses on standards for manufacturers. It takes the burden off of consumers, and there is no requirement in what we're proposing to adopt today, or support today, that requires folks to replace a functioning system. This is only when you go out to buy a new one, when it's broken, that you have to buy one that's less polluting. So, this concern about requiring people to go out and buy new things when you have a functioning system already in place is just not true. These standards are going to reduce smog-forming pollution, cut billions in health-related costs, and improve quality of life, especially for those communities most affected by poor air quality. The moment for stronger action here at home has never been more important when it's clear the federal government's only interest in air quality is to dismantle progress for the benefit of polluters. I urge colleagues to support this resolution to back the South Coast AQMD's proposed rules one-one-one-one and one-one-two-one and move us toward a healthier, more sustainable Los Angeles. Thank you.
Um, so I just wanted to rise up and acknowledge Ms. Hutt's comments, because it's one of the parts of the conversations that continues to get overlooked when there's these overarching policies, and we have a shared commitment to ensuring that we have, for the very communities that we represent, responsible policy and advocacy that doesn't force an overburden on the working families that have no other alternative means but the most cost-effective solutions to maintain. And so while we have these overarching policy dialogues with, you know, individuals that have the affluence and the ability to engage in these types of conversations while our communities are out working, we have to remember some of the very pollutants for our neighborhoods are born out of the result of the trucking that we're going to see an increase of from all the material and debris that is getting trucked into our communities as a result of some of the most recent devastation. The fact that so many of our communities are intersected by freeways and airports without any mitigations, those are some of the daily impacts that our communities are burdened by. And so, while we have these conversations, and I, you know, I, I support the intent of what we're trying to do here, but what I want to ring the bell on is something that I thought was really important that you said, is that it's our working-class communities that when their systems fail are now forced to look for very expensive solutions to be able to pursue going forward in order to maintain any reasonable level of quality of life. And so, who are we really saving here? It's great platitudes, it's great politics, it's fine. But the reality is, is it does a disservice to a lot of the working members of our communities who don't have the means to be able to invest in these more modernized forms of, of solutions for heating and, and all of the variety of, of circumstances that you referenced. So I want to thank you for bringing your eyes to that. While I, you know, I support these, I support these issues and the concept and what we're going to, and what we're driving towards. I think the reality is, is that there's a level of very affluent thinking among individuals that are not bearing the day-to-day impacts the way working-class communities do each and every day. And I advise everybody while they're on those platitudes to remember that there are other policy positions that they could be taking to ensure that there's equity in the decisions that we're making, to ensure that we can better improve the quality of life, the air quality in these very neighborhoods with some of the day-to-day activities that are affecting these neighborhoods currently. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, City Attorney Google Translate. Start with number seventeen, um, local emergency on the homelessness. So I want to show in my support to our council president because he spent three thousand dollars per month on taxpayers' money to support homelessness. And then right now, still, after declaring the local emergency on homelessness, we still have eighty thousand people leaving on the street. So, I will, I will, I really want to tell the council president, this is a really job well done. Let's continue to declare homeless emergency. Let's still continue to throw taxpayers' money away. Let's continue to waste our tax dollar. And then in the future, when the LAPD asking for money, when the LAFD asking for money, we got no money. Why is that? We throw them away, three thousand per month, four thousand per month, convert a luxury hotel to homeless. That's why you have no money. Uh, next item, let's go, let's go to item number eighteen. Thank you very much, City Attorney, the Google Translate. Thank you. Uh, number eighteen is about South L.A. Historic Neighborhood Marker. I'm here to show in the support to our council president, Harris Dawson, because the Figueroa neighborhood is definitely one of the best of the best South L.A. Historic Neighborhood, because the Figueroa prostitution services has been in South L.A. Historic Neighborhood for more than fifty years. What did our council member, Harris Dawson, do about the traditional historic Figueroa prostitution neighborhood services? Absolutely nothing. Every time I go to the bus, I, I, I drive, I walk, I ride a bicycle.
Speaker, this is not related to item eighteen, so I'm going to ask that you stick to the other items.
Buy down the South L.A. Historic Neighborhood, and then I was always stopped by the South L.A. Figueroa prostitute for no reason. Item number thirty is about the fire chief item. Uh, I want to know that during the, during the fire, why I'm seeing on the news that the fire chief have to send one thousand firefighters back to home in the morning of the fire? That doesn't make any sense to me. And then also, I hear on the news that, um, the mayor Bass asking the fire chief do a, some sort of after-action report, and then why our fire chief continue to refuse to do that report? And then, all, all of a sudden, I don't have any firefighting experience at all, so I don't know that. But what I know for sure is that one day before your anticipated disaster weather, one day before you make sure you're all three thousand firefighters ready, standing by, nobody go home. That's what I know for sure. When you know there's a disaster coming, you make sure every LAPD, LAFD is standing by several hours before. That's a common sense right there.
General public comment?
General public comment is that let's continue the fire item. So right now, I'm hearing two stories on the news. Uh, one, one, some, some sort of a news are saying that we need a LGBT fire chief, because firefighting, we don't care about firefighting, we care about DEI and LGBT. And then some other story I hear is that the fire chief continued to fight with the council president, continued to fight with the mayor, that's why she got retaliated against, that's why she got fired. And then sometimes I also hear, uh, other stories on the news that, uh, the fire chief refused to, uh, to, uh, put all, all the one thousand firefighters stay, uh, on, on the January the seventh, and then because of her incompetency, that's why she has to get fired. So right now, there are so many stories on the news. I really wish our council president, uh, which is the best of the best, the Figueroa council president, can tell us that we need more DEI, we need more, uh, we need more, uh, a Figueroa fire chief instead of a regular, uh, fire chief.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Good morning, President Marquis Harris Dawson and well-esteem city council members. My name is Robert Hawkins. I am the president of the Los Angeles City Stentorians. I stand before you today to speak on the corruption and systemic racism that have plagued the Los Angeles Fire Department for way too long. Discrimination, harassment, retaliation against black firefighters continue to go unchecked with no real accountability and a failure of leadership at the highest levels. The Stentorians have repeatedly attempted to work with Fire Chief Christian Crowley to address these issues of serious concern, yet we have seen no meaningful action, only empty promises. Today, we demand change. We demand leadership that will acknowledge and confront these issues head-on. The Los Angeles City Stentorians firmly oppose the appeal and reinstatement of Fire Chief Christian Crowley.
My name is Gloria Medina, and I'm an Angelino who loves this city and has worked for this city to serve communities for thirty years. It saddens me right now to see what's unfolding and to see the attacks on our city by wealthy developers trying to position themselves in this particular moment. Angelinos have been displaced, have lost employment, and are suffering the health implications of the fires. This is a moment to come together, to move in unity, and not to play the, the blame game or to have wealthy people in the city of Los Angeles position themselves. That is a strategy to divide us in Congress. Let's be real, we have vultures salivating, trying to capitalize on this moment for gain and for profit. We had an election in the city, and as Angelinos, we spoke clear, and we elected an experienced leader, the first black woman to serve as mayor. We urge the council to step up into leadership and protect the voice of the people. We have no space for racism in this city, and the attacks on the mayor are racist. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Castillo, and I'm here as a concerned citizen. I ask the president and the city council members to listen to the accord and the unity that we respect and ask of our leaders. Our concern is that the issue of the mayor's authority to remove a fire chief for dereliction of duty is within her authority and has been spoken to by the people in terms of voting for the mayor and making sure that this is a rule of law. Our concerns are that at this time of crisis, as we're trying to turn the corner, that we are seeing divisive political movements to do a public lynching of the first African-American mayor of Los Angeles. Let us not forget that we are here in support of accepting of the-
Speaker, your time has expired.
Liquor for you? How about liquor for you? Does anyone want liquor for you? I don't find it pleasing to have necessity for alcohol in all our communities. I find it very disrespectful that we influence our communities to get drunk, kill people, and bring harm and liability to those who don't want to be a part of the necessity of convenience of alcohol. Right, Mr. Groth? Mr. Groth, for the record, I am talking about alcohol. And I'm going to put it very clear. My fucking determination on fucking public convenience for fucking necessity for fucking sale of alcohol beverages are a fucking disgrace. Sight consumption fucking shit off the holdings in one location in Glendale. Are you familiar with that, Nazarian? That's what we don't want, but that's in CD thirteen. And look at the other dirty fucking alcohol issue here. Time again, we deal with these hearings on consumption of alcohol. Why? I believe that DeJango up there, our, our acting mayor, is probably drunk because-
So, which item are you speaking to? Well, you've noted there are multiple-
I'm narrating the issues about alcohol inconvenience, asshole.
Yes, but one of those, yes, but the PCN, item nine was-
But there are two of them.
Mr. Herman, you can either let me speak, or you can forfeit the rest of your time. Go ahead and hold his time this one time. Okay, so you have, there are multiple alcohol-related items on there, but one of them was continued. So you've exhausted your one minute on item number ten, and item number nine is no longer available. So please identify which item you'd like to speak to, or you can move to general public comment if you'd like.
Oh, how heavenly. So let's go to thirty. Let's talk about Ms. Christina Crowley and how your acting mayor, Mr. DeJango up there, did not help support her. Instead, he looked to fire her. I call that discrimination. I call that just not knowing what the fuck he was doing in his capacity that day, at that time. All this could have been prevented. All you had to do was summons me to remind you that, yes, the reservoir was empty, there were high winds, and you don't have to be that fucking stupid to not understand that this would accelerate the fire. After all, to my left and to my right, we got honorable men and women of the Fire Department here to support Christine Crowley, just like I'm doing today. And the reason is because we have already known that the Fire Department's budget was far behind and did not exceed what LAPD was offered, right? So, why does that happen? And I'll tell you one fucking good reason why.
So you've exhausted your one minute on this item. You can continue during general if you'd like.
I know that asshole, so why do you interrupt me? I know what I'm doing. I've been doing this for twenty fucking years. Twenty motherfucking years, Groth. And in your fucked-up country of Korea, they don't want me to speak English. They do not want me to speak English. But let me remind you about Brandenburg versus Ohio in reference to a dirty nigger. This city, this city, Brandenburg versus Ohio, this dirty fucking city of corruption is what I'm talking about. And how many times have you disregarded the homeless problem? That's another crisis. Another motherfucking crisis created by the Jew-Jews who should go back to Israel and save America. Yeah, that's the real issue. What about Snyder versus Phelps? Goddamn bitches. The Pope rape boys, priests go to hell. That's a fact. God hates you, and you're all a bunch of fucking liars. And that's the reason why I can come up here and say you're a bunch of dirty niggers for the record. Thank you, Groth.
All right. So before the next speaker comes up, just want to make an announcement to the room, because we have a lot of new people here. First of all, I appreciate everyone's patience. Mr. Herman is not a cosplayer who normally frequents Hollywood Boulevard. He is a frequent gadfly here. The First Amendment requires us to allow people to speak during public comment. That does not mean that this body or this city condones those comments, appreciates those comments, or agrees with those comments. Mr. Herman and his friends like to offend as many people as possible and often try to get a rile out of people here. So again, appreciate your patience. Please do your best to ignore it, and we will move along expeditiously with this meeting. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Chung Ho, and I proudly serve as a director with United Firefighters of Los Angeles City Local One Twelve. And today, I'm here to ask all of you to give Chief Crowley a fair shot. Listen to her with an open mind and then make the right decision. The men and women of our great Fire Department supports Chief Crowley because she stood up, she spoke out, and she had our backs. I have never seen a fire chief in my career consistently speak out about the constant understaffing and lack of funding for our Fire Department. Today, you're going to hear from my U-Flat colleagues, who will tell you why the mayor stated reasons for dismissing Chief Crowley are simply false. The mayor said the chief was being terminated for three reasons. Number one, not keeping a thousand firefighters on duty past their shift on the morning of January seventh. Number two, not communicating with the mayor about the dangerous wind conditions. And number three, not agreeing to an after-action report from the LAFD Fire Commission. Each of these manufactured reasons are simply inaccurate. The truth is, there was nowhere to put a thousand firefighters that morning. Second, the entire country knew about the dangerous weather conditions. Finally, there is a comprehensive, independent after-action report happening right now. The reality is, Chief Crowley was fired for telling the truth and for exposing the budgetary deficiencies of our Fire Department. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Fabela. I'm a director with the United Firefighters of Los Angeles City. But foremost, and more importantly, I'm a thirty-one-year veteran of the LAFD. I serve as a captain to at Fire Station Twenty-Seven in the Hollywood area, which lies in Soto Martinez's council district. I'd like to straight-up debunk the claim that a thousand firefighters could have been held over the morning that the fires broke out. This is a false statement. Let me set the record straight. First, there were not a thousand firefighters, and I repeat, there were not a thousand firefighters or seats for them to put them in. Our firefighters would have been held over, waiting at fire stations because there was nowhere for them to be placed. There were just not enough seats. We had more firefighters calling in and waiting to work that day or the following days and nowhere to put them. On any given day, we have approximately a combined one hundred apparatus, which includes engines, trucks, rescue ambulances that sit idle, out of service at our two maintenance yards. There aren't enough mechanics to fix these. Mechanics that were cut in Mayor Bass's budget directly impacted the ability for fire apparatus to be repaired and placed back into service. The LAFD fleet was impacted because civilian staff positions were cut. As for the mayor's claim that a thousand firefighters could have been placed or used, it's just not true. At the most, a hundred and twenty firefighters could have been placed on our two-hundred-series apparatus, but the math doesn't add up. A hundred and twenty, nowhere is a hu, is a thousand firefighter positions. I hoped you would hear the facts today by my colleagues.
Speaker, that exhausts your time on item thirty and general public comment.
Good morning. Dave Riles, Director, United Firefighters of, of Los Angeles City. I'm a proud thirty-two-year veteran of the LAFD. Currently assigned to Fire Station One-O-Seven out in Chatsworth, uh, which is Council Member Lee's district. I was raised in a valley where I currently reside, in the San Fernando Valley. And in our neck of the woods, we're not unaccustomed to, uh, high winds and, and wild, wildland fires. Like a majority of the Los Angeles residents, I too struggle with the idea or the, um, reality that, uh, Mayor Bass was unable to, um, uh, anticipate the horrendous windstorms that were coming that day. In fact, the mayor herself posted the following on her social media account. "There is an expected destructive and potentially life-threatening windstorm starting today, Tuesday, January seventh." It's just inexplicable for the mayor of, of Los Angeles to say that she didn't know about the dangerous weather, windstorms, uh, that day that were impending, with all the forecasts all over the country, everybody knew about it. The mayor's own failure to be informed should not lead to the dismissal of the fire chief. As mayor of the city of Los Angeles, the residents expect her to be the one in command. She should have been checking in with all of her department heads to find out exactly what their needs would be for the impending weather event, to make sure that everybody was covered. That's what a proactive mayor would do. Being the mayor of the second-largest city, uh, in America is a huge responsibility. Shifting the blame to those who are the boots on the ground, that are doing their part to help you fix everything in town.
Speaker, that, your time has expired.
Pat McOscar, proud Local One Twelve member. And the first thing I want to say to all of you guys is I know how much you deeply care about public safety, how much you do to ensure public safety in your communities. I want to urge you today to make your decision about Chief Crowley based only on public safety, not on politics, not on relationships, not on alliances, only on what's best for your citizens. I have a certain perspective on fire chiefs and their effect on public safety. I served a long time ago as the president of Local One Twelve, and I served with, uh, two mayors and four fire chiefs. And you wonder why there was four? Well, the second mayor, the reason is, the second mayor didn't have the same appreciation for, uh, the work of, the life-saving work of firefighters and paramedics that we would have liked. And then we had a great budget crisis back then. We had the, uh, the Great Recession, huge impact on the city budget. And, and unfortunately, that mayor decided that the biggest cuts, the deepest cuts, were going to be to the Fire Department back then. We ended up losing three hundred and seventeen positions, ambulances and fire trucks. We had delayed responses. People suffered and people died because of those cuts. How did they happen? That mayor hired three successive fire chiefs that each lasted about one year. They lasted long enough to get up here before your predecessors in this horseshoe and tell them that those deep budget cuts, they wanted them. It was their plan. We were going to be more efficient somehow and more effective with fewer firefighters and longer response times. They sold them to you because they were yes-men, and then they walked out the door as fast as they could with their, uh, big pay raise and their big pension for being the fire chief who sold budget cuts. That's the effect that a fire chief has on public safety. We had yes-men back then. Right now, we've got a courageous woman serving as the fire chief in Los Angeles. And because you all care about public safety and doing what's right for your citizens, you should make sure to retain her.
Speaker, you've exhausted your time on the item and on general public comment.
You want someone to speak truth to power? You want someone to tell you what your Fire Department needs?
So please move on, Speaker. Please move on to another item. You've exhausted your, your two minutes on general public comment and the item.
I want to ask you all again, just do the right thing. Focus on public safety. If you're focused on public safety, you will retain this fire chief.
We're going to, you're going to forfeit the rest of your time. We're going to have to move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President and esteemed council. My name is Eric Aguirre, and I'm with Brotherhood Crusade, and I'm here to support Mayor Bass and her decision. Mayor Bass made the right decision to remove the fire chief. Leadership changes are necessary when performance doesn't meet the high standard required for public safety. The decision to remove the fire chief- The decision to remove the fire chief was about experience and accountability, not politics. Emergency response leadership requires proven experience, and in this case, the missteps during the Palisades fire showed inexperience. The mayor has the authority and responsibility to make leadership changes, ensuring public safety is her top priority. This includes making tough but necessary decisions. This is about public trust and restoring confidence in emergency. People need to know their leaders will act decisively in a crisis, and this move reflects that commitment. Communication during this crisis was insufficient. Continue. The acting mayor was directly briefed, was not directly briefed, which is a standard procedure during an unfortunate event like we experienced. Pre-deployment failures put lives and property at risk. Proper preparation is key in disaster response, and leadership must be held accountable when it doesn't happen. Forecasts extreme winds made aerial assault impossible, but leadership should have anticipated this and made sure additional resources were available. Effective leadership, challenges, and adjusts. The city must move forward with strong, experienced leadership in the fire department. Now is the time to focus on solutions, including rebuilding and preparing for future emergencies. The decision reinforces the city's commitment to public safety. The focus should remain on improving systems, innovating new ways to address climate change, and not dwelling on the past mistakes. Today, I'm asking council to stand with Mayor Bass. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President and council members. I'm here in support of the mayor's actions to move our city forward. I am disgusted by the outright and coordinated attacks on our mayor, attacks that are rooted in anti-blackness and that are ultimately a distraction and under intent to keep those closest to the issue on the margins and extent centered on the billionaires that benefit from this conflict. These attacks do nothing but take away the focus that should be on helping to support the majority Black residents that lost their homes in Altadena and on supporting the rest of the city that was indirectly impacted by the climate catastrophe. The misdirected attacks on Mayor Bass for her actions are rooted in hate and propaganda, and it does nothing to address the root causes of this climate catastrophe. Ultimately, we do need to talk about real accountability, which looks like stopping billionaires and corporations who created this climate crisis from continuing to pillage our environment for profit. Accountability looks like not allowing Southern California Edison to raise prices and passing along costs to residents to pay for the greedy actions that directly impacted, that directly sparked the fires. I believe in the strength of the city and in our ability to build strong connections among communities. And I believe in Mayor Bass, who stepped up for South LA, who stepped up for California, and who is now stepping up for our city. We need all of you to step up too and move past it so we can put our focus back on supporting those residents impacted by the climate catastrophe. Thank you.
My name is Sequaria McCoy, and I am a proud supporter of our current mayor Karen Bass. It is my opinion to uphold the correct decision made by our current mayor Karen Bass. She's made various decisions in the past, and let's continue to support her in her decision-making. We can go back and forth about character, about how good a person is, how they make us feel. That's wonderful. The point is that decision was, a correct decision was not made. That's the bottom line. We need to support our mayor and her executive decisions, along with supporting and not usurping and diluting the power of decision-makers. Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Olympian. I am a resident of the city of Los Angeles. We ask that during this time of continued uncertainty and recovery for the city of Los Angeles, the council focuses on preserving the unity of residents and leadership that shone through when our community mobilized to support those who had lost everything. Mayor Bass has been made to be the scapegoat of a natural disaster that devastated the historically Black neighborhood of Altadena and its residents, who were deprioritized when Chief Crowley chose to focus on political division. We ask that you resist the national persecution of Black women in power, honor her executive authority as an elected leader, and prioritize your most vulnerable constituents. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Cidis Barrios. My family have been proud residents of Council District 15 for 40 years. We have lived on the same block for generations, investing, fighting for our community. I'm a property owner and a business owner in that district. I stand here today to remind the city council that Mayor Karen Bass was elected by Angelenos, like my family and I, to be the highest-ranking decision-maker for the city. Yet, this hearing is an obvious attempt to undermine her leadership. Let's call it what it is, it's an attack on her authority. Her decision-making is, let's not ignore the obvious, her as a Black woman in power. Would we even be here today if this was, we had a male mayor? That's the question we should be asking. We cannot allow these attacks on Black women leadership to play out in our city, not here, not now. In this historic moment, our communities are suffering on multiple fronts. The city should be laser-focused on recovery and not distractions like this. We need to stand together, not tear each other down. Our city moves forward when we focus on real solutions, not political theater. I am with and represent the voices of voters that elected Mayor Bass. I urge this council to do the right thing. Stand with the mayor, stand with the people, and put our community first. Thank you.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
All items and general public comment, please.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items, go ahead.
Thank you. So, item 17 is an extension of the emergency declaration relating to housing and homelessness. I find it interesting that we have this item on the same agenda as we do item 27, which is installation of a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Nothing against Christina Ricci, I just find it odd for the council in one breath to say we are in an active emergency and in the next say, "Let's decorate our city with stars." Not even to mention Hollywood Boulevard, it's a pretty big mess. There's unhoused residents sleeping, it's covered in piss and shit. The last thing you do when your house is crumbling down or on fire, start decorating with stars. Maybe these are some things we could put on the back burner while we deal with actual emergencies. There's another motion here regarding some $40,000 to give to a company known as Indiegov Corporation to assist CD1 in policy and outreach efforts. With respect to Eunice's and to Hugo, who seconded her motion, why did the people elect you if you're going to outsource policy? What is your office spending money on? What's your office spending money on if you're going to outsource the outreach that you hire staff and have discretionary funding to use? I also have a lot of concerns when I see these motions about outsourcing things that you should be handling internally and who works for those companies, who serves on those boards, because we know that there's a lot of insider dealing among this body, and it's really unfortunate. Oh, we also have a motion to light up City Hall in special recognition of the 35th anniversary of LA Best, which is a great organization, I support it. But $1,400 for unspecified recognition and some lights to go up on City Hall seems like a lot when again we're under active emergencies. So, regarding item 30, I disagree with a lot of remarks here regarding motivations behind why some of us, like myself, who actually voted for Mayor Bass, would be against her removing the fire chief. This is a rare instance where I want to applaud Councilmembers Park and Rodriguez for standing up for the fire chief. You know, it's rare that I agree with y'all. But I think you're both doing the right thing in standing behind the fire chief. I think it's obvious, based on how things played out, that this is nothing more than a political grab by the mayor. She's already started fundraising for her next campaign. And a lot of the people on this body are really afraid to get on the mayor's bad side. But I think you should have a little more courage than that. Do right by the people, stand up for the fire chief. She was doing everything she could with the limited resources she had, considering the budget that you all approved. General public comment? While the mayor was far away, Los Angeles had a windy day that started a roaring blaze. It devoured people's homes. When the mayor came back to town, she decided to pass the blame around. She said, "Crowley, you're fired now." The mayor couldn't be more wrong. The people say, "Crowley, you're a fine chief. We know you did all you could. I don't know if the council supports you, but they should."
30 and public comment.
So you have one minute for each, go ahead.
My name is Pastor William D. Smart Jr. I am president and CEO of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Southern California, which as you know is Dr. Martin Luther King's organization. Last Thursday, we hosted, along with the NAACP, National Action Network Organization, us, M.B.C.C.L.A., Black Clergy Community Labor Alliance. We had a town hall meeting with the Centurions. They are the Black firefighters. During that time, I heard some of the most disgusting things I had ever heard, the way that Blacks were being treated in the fire department. It was very, it was very hurtful at times. The most racist comments, the motions of positions taking place, lack of enforcement and protections of African-American firefighters. And I, some of us were in tears, and it was virtual. People were writing in, talking about what was going on. You know, I would have said, "Yes, it's happening." But evidence of that is this morning. When we got in this, the firefighters of Centurions were at the back. When we got in, all the other firefighters were in here. There's a division going on in this city. We have some difficult days ahead as a community. Are we going to stand up and face it like we are to as human beings? Or are we going to be dictated from Washington DC and other places of what we should be doing as a community? What the mayor did, the mayor has a right to do. The mayor is the mayor. I respect, I love, and I have, and I trust her with my, in my family's lives. But let me tell you, we as a body of people, and even all of us sitting in here, we have to make a decision, are we going to live together or are we going to fight apart? Are we going to be separated? It's time for all of us to stand up and move forward together.
Good morning, President Huddley Hayes and other city council members. My name is Andrew Cox, and I was unfairly terminated during my probationary period. And I would like to highlight some of the things that happened during my probationary period with the LAFD. One, daily I would receive verbal and mental abuse, called a fucking idiot, told I had mental disorders, mental disabilities, said that I had CTE. And while doing fire prevention, I was told that I was, and my two hoods speak professionally, because he knows plenty of Blacks that can speak professionally. Not only that, I was given Go drills at 3:00 AM, 11:30 PM, and sick in the rain. I was forced to be transported to the hospital after not being allowed to drink water. Just continuous berating, telling me that I'm not good enough, that I don't deserve the job. And many times during one of my captain's daily rants that lasts 20 to 30 minutes, told, he expressed anger at the department for hiring me. I believe this was because of my background and my ethnic area where I grew up. And I have also formally rescinded and appealed this to Fire Chief Kristen Crowley. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, I'm speaking item 30, general public comment.
So you have one minute for each, go ahead.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. My name is Natasha Moyes, and I live in downtown LA, and I voted for Mayor Karen Bass. And I stand here today in strong support of Mayor Bass and the importance of Black leadership. Black women in leadership deserve equal respect, recognition, and trust as any other leader should. Our decisions should not be second-guessed, questioned, and we have earned our place at the table through hard work and dedication. With Mayor Bass at the helm, we have a leader that truly understands the challenges of our communities. And we have seen that as she's tackled the largest issue that, that's one of our, one of the largest issues our cities has seen, which was unhoused, and now this natural disaster. We can move forward together and rebuild our great city in a way that is equitable and inclusive, but only if she is our leader and allowed to make the decisions that need to be made on a daily basis without question. Thank you for your time.
My name is Benjamin Torres. I'm the president and CEO of CD Tech. We're a community-based organization in south-central Los Angeles who's been fighting for many years, along with the mayor and the progressive movement of organizations that have been organized to try and bring equity and justice to the city of Los Angeles for Black and Brown folks, for historically marginalized people. And through that movement and through that awareness, we were able to elect Mayor Karen Bass to represent and lead the charge to try and make the city an equitable city for all of us to live in, for our children, regardless of class, regardless of race, regardless of gender. This is a political move to try and cut off Black leadership, Black female leadership in the city. We in South Los Angeles support Mayor Bass and the effort she has had to try and bring equity and attention and investment to the parts of the city that have historically been marginalized and excluded. This is an attempt to block her leadership. This would not be done if she was a white male of privilege in the mayor position. Thank you.
Good morning, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
In the interest of committee, I will take one minute for item 30 in general. So I give some other folks the extra two minutes, just give me a hand for that. So now, what do you got here?
Hold on, I appreciate that, I actually genuinely do. So start us clock for one minute, that's item 30, and then we'll give you your minute for general.
I mentally tricked you and you gave me 49 more seconds. So you see, we got a scapegoat today. That's right, and today's scapegoat is our LGBTQ chief of fire. Why is Marquis Z taken out a lesbian, a white lesbian? What is this racist bullshit about? I thought you wanted diversity, fool. How about you over there, Padilla? Just accepted a goddamn promotion by Bass to the Metro Board. Who buying your vote? And then over here, look at this staffer, B. John Lee. What the FBI tell you to vote for? So you see, people, the entire fire is the blame of Tracy Irene Parker, CD11. She didn't fix the trucks in the boneyard, and she didn't fill up the reservoir. She's the demon here. So one minute of general comment. Now, it takes 10 of you FBI investigated target scumbags to overturn this ridiculous retaliatory decision to take a federally-protected whistleblower. Hugo, you know about that. She's a federally-protected whistleblower, and you're going to fire her? Uh-uh, uh-uh. Because that means if you vote to uphold that and later she comes back, that could get you indicted along with the mayor, and you don't want that. First, we want the investigation. Why did Tracy Park not fill up the reservoir? Why didn't Tracy Park repair the 111 trucks in the fucking boneyard? Why did Hugo Soto Martinez cut the budget, fire all of our mechanics, so we can't fix our trucks? Support Crowley, keep her as chief, she's a good woman.
Okay, Hernandez. I oppose your motion in regards to the $330,000 that you want transferred. I also oppose your request on the self-help. Hernandez, I'm talking to you. We got 95 senior citizens that got displaced with the fire over there. I'd rather have you take the $330,000 and do something about those senior citizens and get them a house again. Yeah, you came to our park and visited. I live in Chinatown. I also want you to get rid of the homeless people that is over there at CVS robbing it every day. They burned the building to the left, they burned the house across the street and the house to the right, and the two cars 50 feet from my house. You get rid of the homeless encampment, or I'm going to go burn their camp. The other topic I want to speak on real quick here. Let's get to this. Hernandez, you also talked about rent relief. I manage a building in Chinatown, I mean in Garfield. Excuse me?
Which item are you speaking to?
It had to do with the comment when Hernandez was pitching a motion in regards to possible rent relief.
So that's not open for public comment, so I'm going to...
Okay, then we'll take it in the general.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
So, the city had a landlord rent relief program, so did the county. I entered my property into that a year ago. We could not evict the tenant, the tenant was already $20,000 behind. Then we entered into the new landlord program, in which, we did that last February. Then we entered into the new landlord program, in which, we did that last February. I just got a letter on February 10th stating that they're out of money. I'm now $44,000 in debt. Now, meat and potatoes. Chief Crowley needs to stay exactly where she's at. Not where she's at, but where she needs to be, and that's back at her job. There's a lot of false information going around. The mayor said false information about 45 trucks being out there with 1,000 firefighters. A truck can only hold four people. There's four seats and four seat belts in that truck, period. I don't care if you put them all on there. You would have needed 205 trucks to put 1,000 firefighters.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Well, I tell you what, this lady needs to stay. She needs her job back, period.
And, Mr. Kramer, before you begin, I'm not sure that I heard the last speaker correctly, but just to be clear, please do not go out and start fires in homeless camps or anywhere else. Good morning.
All items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
All right, starting off with Item 17. Item 17 is renewing the local emergency regarding homelessness, the inside starving program, where the mayor sweeps encampments, forces unhoused people to move down the street to somewhere else to appease rich people, and then puts three of them in a cheap motel somewhere 30 miles away with no food or blankets. So, that's what happens most of the time with this thing. And we have a homelessness emergency, but we don't have an eviction moratorium. Shouldn't that be the first thing that should happen when you have a homelessness emergency? Should you have an eviction moratorium? Because clearly, there's a problem with homelessness, so why are we throwing more people on the street? It seems like that should be the first thing you should do, is have that eviction moratorium. Okay, so, let's move on to Item... Let's see. So we have Item 21, which is like expert policy services? Shouldn't you be making your own policies? We have Item 25, which is lighting up City Hall for LA Best. I mean, I think they do some pretty good work in LA Best, but lighting up City Hall, more money? Why does it cost so much to light up City Hall? Like, shouldn't that just be like, you know, just get... Technology exists to just have a computer system that just goes, select the color, and City Hall is lit that color? Why, what are you doing when you light up City Hall? Why does it cost that much? 27 is Walk of Fame Star. So, I mean, you know, it's a nice little tourist attraction, but, you know, it's more city resources going towards this right now, when we have a lot of other crises that we should be looking into right now. All right, so we have Item 30, which is related to the appeal, Crowley's appeal for the fire chief. So, there's been a lot of falsehoods going around about what actually happened during this... So like, Marquise, you talked about how Crowley wasn't getting back to you, but yet the records show that Crowley contacted you, like, and then you didn't get back to her until like several hours later. So it sounds like she contacted you first, and you didn't bother to... You just sat on it all day and didn't bother to respond. And it's very obvious that this is a kind of a political punishment, because she criticized you taking money away to give it to the LAPD. So, but I do think we should, I just still think that you should take a look into the allegations of like racism going on in the LA Fire Department. That is something you should look at. But clearly, this firing Chief Crowley was a political punishment for her criticizing the mayor. So, yeah. All right, for my general public comment, I want to ask why the LAPD was assisting Trump immigration officials in LA on Friday, last Friday, I think it was. And of course, McDonnell, who, as we all let you know, told you, repeatedly worked with ICE while he was sheriff, and you all ignored that. Now, he claimed that they weren't assisting them, they were just providing traffic control, which is a form of assisting them. That is a form of assisting them. So, it's apparently their policy, they don't assist them, but then they don't call traffic control assisting them.
If there's nothing else from you all, I'll ask former Chief Crowley, if she's in the audience, to come to the table. We extended an invitation to Chief Crowley to speak to this hearing this morning to make the case, and so she has consented to join us this morning, and so we will hear from her first.
Good morning, Council President. Our honored and very, very honored city council members, our community members that have taken the time to be here and to listen in, and to our amazing and incredible LAFD firefighters who do the work every single day, thank you so much for being here. Now I stand, or sit, before you today, not only as the former fire chief, appealing to be reinstated, but as a leader who has always placed the safety, health, and well-being of our incredible and heroic firefighters first. Next, in regard to my appeal, now I will set the record straight about the multiple false accusations that were made against me. First, I did not refuse to conduct an after-action report, and let me be clear, this is a false accusation. During our discussions after an action-after report, I should say, during our discussions about an after-action report, I advised the fire commissioners about my opinion that was best in regard to how to use LAFD resources. I said that the LAFD is not capable, nor do we have the proper resources to adequately conduct an after-action report for the Palisades fire, due to the sheer magnitude, scope, and complexity of the incident. We are already understaffed, under-resourced, underfunded, and based on my knowledge of the LAFD's resources and capabilities, I recommended simply to collaborate with Governor Newsom's already-selected and funded agency, Fire Safety Research Institute, or FSRI, because they are already conducting an independent analysis of the windstorm and fire events in the Los Angeles and Ventura counties. In contrast to the LAFD, FSRI has the capability to conduct a proper, thoroughly researched and analyzed after-action report and wildfire analysis. And the FSRI report will also be independent, which is so important as we figure out a way to move forward. This is what they're already being paid to do. Prior to me leaving the meeting, the fire commissioners agreed with my recommendation that FSRI is the best equipped to conduct the after-action report. FSRI will also be publishing its findings and recommendations, like it did for the line of fire that occurred in early August 2023 on the island of Maui. Now, my position has not changed, and I wholeheartedly support the need for a professional organization to conduct a full analysis of the Palisades fire. We owe that to the community, we owe that to the fire service, and that is the path forward. These steps are essential to improving response efforts, guiding recovery, and building a better and safer disaster resilience community for our future. Second, on the morning of the fire, I did not send home 1,000 firefighters who could have hopped on FireEngine and fought the Palisades fire, nor did I leave 40 available fire engines unstaffed. These are all false accusations as well. The 40 fire engines in question were already staffed and running 911 calls with on-duty personnel in their normal configuration. When the Palisades fire broke out, those fire engines were appropriately staffed and were used where they were needed. Additionally, at 8:00 hours on January 7, 2025, the LAFD pre-deployed 24 engines, three battalion command teams, five brush patrols, two water tenders, additional air operations personnel, and additional dispatchers. These 128 pre-deployed and augmented personnel were strategically placed in wildfire-prone areas across the entire city, near multiple freeways to ensure a rapid response. Our actions were based on the recommendations of our subject matter experts, the LAFD's emergency operations staff. As for the 1,000 firefighters who allegedly were sent home prior to the fires, we did not have enough apparatus to put them on. Because of the budget cuts and lack of investments in our fleet maintenance, over 100 of our fire engines, fire trucks, and ambulances sat broken down in our maintenance yards, unable to be used to help during one of the worst wildfire events in our history. And third, it is also a false allegation that we failed to notify the mayor's office about the upcoming weather event. I stand by our previous statements about this. The LAFD engaged in all of its standard communications, including emailing two separate media advisories, conducting multiple live and recorded media interviews about the predicted extreme weather and fire danger, and also notifying city officials about the upcoming weather events. The emergency management department also plays a key role in notifying the mayor's office and city officials. And the mayor's office itself also sent out multiple media messages prior to the fire's warnings about the expected destructive and potential life-threatening windstorm. It is never the wrong time to do the right thing and to speak the truth. And the truth is that the fire chief should not be prevented from or punished for speaking openly and honestly about the needs and capabilities of the LAFD, or for doing her best to protect our firefighters and our communities. In closing, it has been an absolute honor of my life to serve and represent the incredible men and women of the LAFD as their fire chief. Our people do amazing things every single day, and I am so grateful, beyond words, to have been in this position for nearly three years. We have much to be proud of, and we stand with and always will stand with the communities that we serve with integrity, compassion, and courage. I urge you to vote to reinstate me as the fire chief. But no matter how the vote goes, the LAFD, your LAFD, deserves to be properly funded, staffed, and resourced, so that we can meet the ever-growing needs of the community. We owe that to the LAFD, and we owe that to those we serve. Thank you.
that I believe can corroborate some of what Chief Crowley has asserted in terms of her cooperation. That could be validated by the CAO's office. Is it an opportunity for, if Matt Zabel or Ben Sehar are here, to answer any questions? Because what we're discussing today is whether or not we should afford and honor the chief's appeal, based on the cited reasons that were disclosed by the mayor for her dismissal. And if we have facts to corroborate her position, I think that's warranted to be heard. And so my question is, would I be afforded the opportunity to ask Mr. Zabel to come forward on some of the assertions that were made that led to her dismissal, so that we could correct the record?
I would defer to the city attorney on that question, but I will point out, I will disagree with Councilmember Rodriguez. The city attorney was very clear that the mayor can fire the chief for any reason or for no reason at all. So, whether or not we establish that we agree with the assessment that the mayor made or we don't agree with the assessment, it doesn't call into question the mayor's authority to make the decision that she did.
It's not questioning the mayor's authority. I'm not questioning the mayor's authority. I'm questioning what was cited as the reason. And if we're going to consider Chief Crowley's appeal, why wouldn't we consider the facts as we know them that could be corroborated by the CAO's office? And that's what I'm asking for.
So again, it's fine to do that. I just want to be clear that even if you were to discredit every one of the reasons, it does not, it does not in any way shade the mayor's authority in this regard. But we'll call the city administrative officer up to take the questions that you have, and we'll excuse Ms. Crowley from the table at this time.
Today, in Budget Committee, there is a recommendation from your office that is going to budget for $150,000 expenditure for an after-action report. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, colleagues, I raise this issue because to suggest that Chief Crowley refused to participate in an after-action report, well, what after-action report? We're just now having that conversation in Budget today with $150,000 recommended expenditure to conduct an independent study of the events. And so I just wanted to be clear, colleagues, that to suggest a refusal of an after-action report, which has not even yet been contracted to be completed, and I think the chief already disclosed that today, that she didn't refuse to participate in that. I just want to make sure that we are all considering the facts as they are. You can't participate in an after-action report when you haven't even funded it yet. And so that conversation and that recommendation for $150,000 is being deliberated by our Budget Committee today. And so I just want to be clear, because Mr. Harris-Dawson, as you and I recall, in the after-action reports that we did with LAPD after the civil unrest, after George Floyd, we spent money. You know it takes many months for that. So to suggest an unwillingness to cooperate, for me, ran amiss from procedurally how these after-action reports are conducted. But I just wanted to clear the record and demonstrate, colleagues, that citing these issues is problematic and disparaging of a well-documented and decorated career for an individual that has honorably served this city for nearly 30 years. Happy Women's History Month. I never thought that this would be the kind of history that we would be making today. This has been really tough to watch, for so many reasons. Because what we're relying on is an environment of political expediency overshadowing the service of a decorated civil servant, someone who has dedicated her life and has ascended the ranks to become the head of the Los Angeles City Fire Department, something that many women have struggled to be able, a career path that many women have never been welcomed to be part of for many, many years. a career path that many women have never been welcomed to be part of for many, many years. I firmly believe, and I'm not alone, that there was no single and sole responsibility for the tragic events that occurred. In fact, Mr. Harris-Dawson, your successor, Mr. Rentana, spoke recently on a Facebook post about how there was not a single one person that can be attributed to the tragic events that occurred in the Palisades fire or even in the Altadena fire. And I believe that's true. Unfortunately, here we are. What has been made as, what has been, I feel, a deflection of responsibility in this environment has landed solely at the feet of one individual, being cited for these, in my opinion, falsehoods around the failures to perform. Because we just established, an after-action report hasn't even been funded yet, let, you know, for her to even be part of, and the apparatus wasn't available for firefighters to be deployed. And what concerns me about procedurally how this has happened, because again, I don't begrudge the mayor and I'm not questioning whether or not the mayor has the authority to hire and fire general managers. That's clear within the charter. Just as an independently elected body of the legislative branch has the opportunity for us to consider the merits of the petitioning of this employee to overturn that decision, we also have a role. And so we're exercising that role. And I'm not going to apologize for doing my job. It was not long, it was just maybe a couple of hours ago that it was even suggested to me that if I was prepared to accept the political ramifications of doing what I am doing right now. I show up every day to be the person that I was raised to be, that if I see something wrong, I'm going to speak out against it and that the truth shall prevail. Because there needs to be accountability on all sides. I didn't run for office on the premise that I would be part of a status quo. I ran for office and promised my constituents that I would stand up and if I saw something that was wrong, I was going to fight to fix it. Where there is injustice in any neighborhood or among any individual, we should have the confidence and the strength to be able to stand up and say, we see something that is wrong. But to be coerced into this idea that there will be political ramifications for speaking up and saying the truth, clearly, we're seeing that now, it's sending the wrong message to every city employee and general manager that it's safer to stay silent than to call out what's wrong. And that isn't okay. I just want to simply say to the men and women of the LA City Fire Department, you are respected and valued. And we know, as a number of our city employees are working with a lot of deficiencies in support. We know this to be the case. And unfortunately, we are looking ahead at a fiscal crisis that is only going to continue to exacerbate a lot of the challenges that we're currently experiencing. But scapegoating and pointing fingers is not going to aid us in correcting these shortcomings. And I think we all have to be honest about the only failure that I believe Chief Crowley had was thinking that people had their back. And so for that, I apologize. Because as a leader of this department, you don't deserve it. I know how many of you get force-hired. I know how many of you are working in stations that are dilapidated. We see it, we see it in a number of city departments right now. We've got a lot of work to do. And I look forward to us digging in, having hard conversations to continue to do that work. But what I won't stand by and do is allow false narratives to be used and levied against an individual who clearly is not deserving of it for the purposes of that individual I saw working 24/7 from the moments those fires, or even preceding the fires erupting. On January 7th, at 10:30 PM, when I was en route to the Hearst Fire Command Post, I got a call from Chief Crowley making sure that I had all the details of what was happening in my own community and the potential threats for evacuations. I got the call. So when people tell me that they're not getting the call, I don't understand because my experience reflects otherwise. So colleagues, I believe that it is inherent upon us as leaders to make difficult decisions, whatever the political ramifications are. I don't give a damn. I believe it's important to let the truth prevail. And you shouldn't disparage or suggest that someone refused to do their job when I've got more than 25 years of examples of how this person has shown up to do it. So colleagues, I ask that we honor the appeal of Kristen Crowley and reinstate her as fire chief for the Los Angeles Fire Department.
I want to say something to my constituents who took the time to share their thoughts with me on both sides of this issue. I've read every single one of your emails, every word. You deserve answers and accountability. And that might very well mean firing everyone who has culpability across multiple departments. And I have no problem with that. But I wouldn't do it without a well-informed record and actual evidence to support that decision, and I don't have it today. And for that reason, I will be supporting the motion to reinstate because accountability doesn't just stop with one person or one department. We need to let investigative, independent investigations guide our actions, not the politics. Thank you.
So my disappointment with this situation is that our chief, the chief chose the wrong time and the wrong place to raise an issue. Spending time talking to the press to tell her side of the story, which I think is important, versus at the command center during the fires, raises major concerns about what proper timing should be. And it is because of that that I hope that we recognize that this is a mayor doing what is within her jurisdiction to fire someone she inherited. And I think that it's important that we remember that true public safety will require our mayor to be able to get along with all of her chiefs and all of her general managers. So as this decision happens, I hope that for the most part, we remember that sometimes it's okay to agree to disagree.
And a good friend of mine reminded me today that our vocation, our mission is that, all of us have that same mission, to provide for public safety. And quite often, maybe always, the mission is larger than ourselves. The mission is larger than ourselves. And I shouldn't turn to firefighters when I say that, I should turn to us. Because firefighters know that. And the mission of providing public safety and ensuring that going forward, we can provide for a safe and effective and functional city will require a tough choice. The most politically expedient thing for a guy like me would be to say the union's right. And we should force two people to work together who may not be able to work together. But I've lived through that. It can be disastrous. And so with a very, very, very heavy heart, I will say that I'm going to put the goal of public safety and a functional city above what might be more politically expedient for me. Because sometimes we need to risk our jobs to do our jobs. And I think our role here is to make sure that we can move forward. And with very heavy heart, I'm going to support the power of the mayor in this matter and say that very often, doing the right thing comes with a sacrifice. Very often, and this is one of those circumstances. We owe it to people that this government can be functional off into the future. And I think the way to make our government functional is to avoid a circumstance where we have an executive officer and the head of a department that can't work together. So thank you, members.
Thank you. Let's open the roll on that matter, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, two noes.
This matter is received and filed.
All right, thank you so much, everybody. What's next?
Mr. President, the council may now move on to consider items one through eight, ten, eighteen through twenty-nine.
All right, those items are now before us, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Escobar, please stop disrupting the meeting, that's your first warning. City Attorney.
Yes, apologies. I did not want to interrupt Councilmember Hutt or you, Mr. President. Mr. Spindler, while I do appreciate you yielding some of your time today to allow more people to speak, please do not disrupt this meeting. The announcements are a part of the meeting. So this is your first and only formal warning. Go ahead.
Any other announcements on the right side of the room, east side of the room?